Okay, it is six thirty, so we'll begin this committee, the whole meeting. Number two on our agenda is adoption of the agenda. Motion comes forward from councillor Maybe, seconded by councillor Jameson, that the agenda be adopted as circulated. Any questions about the agenda as presented? Seeing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? It's carried. Next item is a declaration of culinary interest in the general nature thereof. Does anybody have an interest to declare this evening? Okay, I see none. Number four is in camera and we have no in-camera session this evening, so we'll move on to number five, which is delegations and presentations. And our first delegation this evening is five point one, Peter Harkgrave, Association of Municipalities of Ontario, transitioning to the blue box to full producer responsibility. And Mr. Harkgrave uh is joining us online, so if we'll ask for him to be the main speaker on the screen, and then I'm sure you have a presentation to um are you gonna go through his presentation, Madam Clerk, or is he? He's going to. Okay, you have the floor, Mr. Hargreave.
Perfect, and and thank you for having me today, and and sorry, uh to the clerk, do you want me to bring up my screen?
Yes, please.
Okay. Uh and hopefully uh you can see the screen now.
We can, thank you.
Perfect, uh so my name is Peter Hargreave, uh I've been working as an independent advisor to the association of of municipality uh municipalities of Ontario for the past several years, working to assist in the transition of the blue box to full producer responsibility. And that's what I'm here to present on. So I planned to walk through today just the rationale for the change uh to the blue box, uh provide you with a better understanding of the regulation, the timeline, some council considerations, and what resources and support are available uh to uh you as a council. Just as background, at the inception of the blue box, uh the program was pitched as something that was going to be a financial boon for uh municipalities. Uh this was really never the case, uh and in the two thousands, uh to support municipalities, an agreement was reached with producers uh to move forward with a shared funding model. Uh producers of packaging and paper products were required to pay roughly half of the bill uh for recycling of their materials, while municipalities would pay the other half, and were also required uh to run uh recycling programs. The the relationship between producers and municipalities was always difficult. Uh producers were always of the opinion that municipalities were inefficient and ineffective at running recycling programs, while municipalities, on the other hand, pointed to an ever-changing complex packaging um uh packaging materials that caused confusion to consumers, uh were often difficult to recycle, difficult to plan for, and included a a lot of different material types that had very limited or problematic markets. So the shared responsibility, under the shared responsibility uh relationship, neither party was really fully accountable. Uh and as a result, over time, the cost rose quite dramatically and performance uh began to drop. Um so municipalities, as a result, argued uh that producers should be fully responsible for the recycling system um as they had greater abilities to influence end markets uh through their purchasing, to establish a more efficient uh collection and processing system. And obviously, they had the ability to uh uh design products and packaging that were more recyclable. Uh so municipalities were supportive of the development and eventual passing of the blue box regulation, which was passed in twenty twenty-two. The the regulation made producers fully um operationally and financially responsible for the management of their packaging uh that they put into the marketplace. I'll walk you through some of the elements uh that you should be aware of with the regulation, and show you a number of the improvements that are being made over the former uh uh blue box program plan. But essentially, there's two uh phases to the regulation. The first is a transition phase, which runs from July of this year uh to the end of twenty twenty-five. Um and that's to allow for all municipal programs across the the province to transition. And then full implementation begins in January first of twenty twenty-six. I'll go over all the details, uh but suffice it to say that the regulation assures that residents will have greater access to recycling of more different types of materials, and that there will be progressive, high progressive and enforceable targets in place for the regulation. Uh so the previous uh blue box program only required communities uh with populations over five thousand to collect, collect blue box recyclables. Apartments and multi-residential buildings, as well as long-term care facilities, were serviced by some communities, but it wasn't uh a standard across the uh across the province. Funding received was not applicable uh to businesses, municipal buildings, or institutions. Post-transition, um the requirements are that all communities, except those in the far north, are required to be serviced. All multi-residential buildings, schools, publicly funded long-term care facilities are included, as well as uh some specialized uh public space uh recycling bins. Industrial, commercial, and institutional so uh sources, things like municipal buildings, business improvement areas, places of worship are not included. Uh these were not included, as I mentioned, under the previous regulation either. Um some municipalities do collect from these uh non-eligible sources at their own costs. And producers have said that they will work with communities, at least during that transition period, to ensure that these sources uh still continue to receive collection. Um but they will need the addresses for each of the businesses that uh municipalities may collect from currently. Um uh and they will require uh producer or municipalities to pay for those non-eligible sources. Uh if you are not performing the collection uh uh currently, or or uh moving forward under this new regulation, you'll need to negotiate commercial terms with service providers about collecting from these uh non-eligible sources. Um and then after twenty twenty-six, uh council will need to look at if they would want to continue to provide from non-eligible sources. They will need to establish their own a collection and and processing contracts with those uh s- sources if they want to continue to provide servicing for those. This was, I think, a gap in the regulation, and it is certainly something that uh A M O is uh looking to uh point to, to say there needs to be better policy in place for industrial, commercial, institutional um entities. The new regulation does bring some improvements around the types of materials that are designated, so under the new regulation, there will be a standard list of materials that need to be collected right across the province. So if it is a type of packaging, paper, metal, uh plastic uh or glass, it will need to be collected uh under the new program. Uh there will be as well an expanded list uh uh for all municipalities. Uh and it does include uh single-use uh plastics and packaging-like products. So it will include things like uh utensils, uh plates, uh that uh producers will be required to collect as well. As mentioned, there will, there are in in place uh targets of that producers will need to meet uh for each of the broad packaging uh material types, paper, glass, rigid and flexible, plastic, uh metal, and there is a separate target as well in place for beverage container. Uh the regulation does include um consequences uh if producers do not meet the targets that are in place. Oh. Um so uh the regulation is moving forward for the township of Leeds and and the Thousand Islands. The transition uh to the full producer responsibility model will happen July first, twenty twenty-five. Uh if you want to continue uh collection, uh you will need to bid directly uh for uh through Circular Materials, which is the Producer Responsibility Organization. Or you'll need to provide a partner with a service provider who may uh be bidding in your area. Um as you are transitioning before December twenty twenty-five, your community uh should be looking at making decisions around whether they want to opt in or opt out of providing services uh 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 for the blue box. So do you want to continue to provide curbside collection, which you are doing in your community? Uh and do you want to continue to provide depot, or do you want those services to be taken over by uh the Producer Responsibility Organization and have them uh uh provide those services? If you decide to opt in, you again need to ha- go through contract negotiations with producers on the terms and conditions, the compensation, and assess what risks uh might be in place with the contract you have with them. If you are opting out, you'll need to coordinate with those producers uh and whoever the contracted service provider is, just to ensure that there is a smooth transition uh for residents uh from one system to the other. Um I'm not gonna go through a lot of this detail, but there is certainly information that producers will be looking for from your community to make sure that the transition is smooth. Uh this slide includes just some information around some of the key areas where they are looking uh for information from your municipality around how services currently being provided uh uh to your residents. Uh A M O has put out uh a baseline waste and recycling report uh to provide more information to producers, the baseline, as to what is the current system, how is the current system working currently right now? How is the province uh measuring up against their current targets uh that they have in place uh for uh recycling? Um so it's a fairly substantial report, it does provide a number of recommendations to the government on how they could improve some of the current performance in the in the province around uh waste management. Um just on resources and support, there has been a fair amount of work that's been undertaken by A M O and the Continuous Improvement uh Fund uh to support municipalities in this transition. There is a number of documents available on both A M O site and on C I F site uh to provide municipalities with assistance in moving forward. Uh so those resources certainly are available uh to all Ontario municipalities to make sure that we make sure the transition is as smooth as possible. And I think I probably reached uh my time, so I will stop there, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions uh that council might have.
Thank you very much for the presentation, Mr. Hargreave. Okay, so I'll open it up to council for questions. Uh Deputy Mayor Fode, and then councillor Maybe. Go ahead.
Thank you, worship through you to Mr. Hargreaves. Uh you made references a few times to service provider, has that been uh chosen yet by the province or A M O, or or who is in charge of of selecting service provider or providers?
Uh so uh uh through the chair, the um a decision around who the collector and the processor are is being made by the Producer Responsibility Organization. Uh so that is the main Producer Responsibility Organization is Circular Materials. Uh they have put out uh tenders uh for, in the case where municipalities aren't continuing servicing, uh they put out tenders for those areas uh and are selecting based on a um a tender process for both collection of materials and processing.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Maybe, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and through you, I have a couple uh questions here. Uh how will residents package post-transition if we're going that way? Is it just one garbage bag full of everything, and then it's um sorted out at a processing plant? Uh that be including coated paper, coffee cups, at which we know any coated paper is not recyclable at the moment, uh so they're going to be taking that on as as a waste product. Um and who is processing and where? Uh is this a business opportunity? And then one for um our Director of Operations. Uh is there any talk about who is doing the contracts, or what type of contract costs are coming down the road to us? Thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh so um as of twenty twenty-six, uh all packaging materials will need to be collected and processed. Uh so that will include some materials that are certainly more difficult uh to recycle than others. Uh there are substantial new investments that will likely be made to uh recycling facilities in the province, uh so my understanding right now is there are at least two new um recycling facilities that are going to be built. Uh and those facilities will obviously include uh lots of uh sorting equipment to make sure that materials can be properly sorted, so that will include optical sorters, robotics, uh those types of things to make sure materials can be sorted. Uh and there is a lot of uh fund, the resources being spent right now around ensuring that there are markets for uh the materials, uh all packaging materials, the large uh producers have made some some fairly substantial um commitments uh uh to making sure all of their packaging is recyclable. Uh um so there is a lot of work that's happening on that side to make sure that they can meet those commitments.
Okay. Perfect. The Mr. Holiday, there was the last question uh from councillor Maybe for to to you, which was?
Uh just to reiterate uh about contracts for, because in the pre- presentation here, I talked about contracting out to different uh people about collection, processing, and and all that.
Thank you. So a- as uh Peter had had spoken to before, the uh there's a transition period from July of twenty twenty-five to uh January of twenty twenty-six. Um if we decide to opt in, we're opting in to continue to provide that service from the July first to the to the January first time time period. And then if we decide to opt in after that, we will have to compete for that. So us hosting a our facility here at Lansdowne, as an example, um we would have to compete to to operate that depot, you know, to to provide that service to our residents. Versus if we opt out, then it would be given directly to uh to the contractor to provide that service at a at at an alternate location. Did I say that right, Peter?
Correct, yes.
Go ahead, councillor Jameson.
I got a couple of things, but the first thing, based on what Director Holiday is saying. Um right now, we take our recycling materials, some of which are mentioned here, to the dump. Um and from what I can glean out of this thing, uh we may be in a position where we can no longer do that. So if we do not take on the responsibility of of collecting and moving it, uh someone else who wins the bid could tell us we have to take our stuff to Napanee or Brockville or goodness knows where. That's wh- what I'm reading in into this. Is there any, any?
Go ahead, Director.
Thank you through your worship. Um at this time, we don't have those details of what it's going to look like. Um they're simply looking for us to to opt in and opt out at this point without giving the the full picture. Uh this is one of the things with the the municipal working group that I formed that one of the questions that we have is what does this look like after the transition period? Um we have spoken as well with uh with Ms. Landry about um transitioning to a collection, a township-wide collection, and and being able to to go that route as well. Um so we have to do an application to, uh I believe it was to C M O, C M O for that. Um because collection wasn't undertaken pre night uh two thousand and nineteen. Uh they can hold us to that that's a pre nineteen um process. Uh so for us, you know, if if we do have to take it somewhere external, then the other option would be for internal collection, and for us to do do that, we have to apply for it. So those are the details that we have at this.
So just just to be clear, before I take more questions, this delegation is for basic information of what's coming down the pipe, there will be a subsequent report that comes to council, whether we opt in or opt out. So we don't have to make a decision this evening. So um I just didn't want anybody to get anty that we needed, there's obviously more information to come, and um the questions that are being asked this evening of the director obviously will help form that report, so um if it's unclear now, don't worry, I'm sure that uh Director Holiday will endeavor to make the specifics more clear as time wears on. Obviously, um Mr. Hargreaves, he's been doing this for however long, and he's working with A M O, we're not the only municipality that are confused and and worried about this. Um this part of landfills, even though that's not going into the landfill, we're we're paying somebody to take our recycling now, so um part of that report would be costing and all the other fun stuff that goes along with it. So but I just wanted to qualify that before we move on. Go ahead, councillor Jameson.
Yeah, we need to keep our heads up from this moment forward. Because there's a couple of things in these slides that um when you see, and I maybe I'm mis- misinterpreting the slide, but when you see a a threshold, recovery threshold of forty percent for flexible pa- plastic and sixty percent for rigid plastic. Um that's what the producers are expected to recover. And when you look at the population of this province, um they can do that and not get out of bed in Toronto. I mean, it's just that simple, and the numbers do not serve the rural areas in a way that what I'm concerned about is we're going to get the producers saying, yeah, we'll we'll do it, but you gotta get your stuff s- somewhere else, like I said before, far away. Um so I'm very concerned about that when I read these numbers, and yeah, full disclosure, I was a producer when this whole discussion started way back in the early days of this century, so um uh it is very concerning to me to see these thresholds, because I think this is not going to serve rural Ontario very well, and I I hope that personally, my message back to A M O is um we're gonna have to try really hard to make sure that uh the rural municipalities don't go under the bus here.
Fair. Any other comments or questions from? Oh, sorry, I apologize, Mr. Hargreave.
I- if if I might add, um so so the way that the requirements for collection work is uh producers are required to provide uh servicing at least as accessible as waste, as garbage servicing. Um so if if the producers are asking you to send your materials outside, you have to drop off your materials outside of the community, that wouldn't be as accessible as as your waste servicing. So the minimum level is they're meeting the same accessibility as as waste collection. So there are some built-in factors to make sure that uh that uh that they can't simply, producers can't simply take the materials in the highest density areas. Um they have to collect and provide the same level of servicing right across the province in every community.
Follow-up councillor Jameson.
You're worship gonna push back on that, because the reality is that if your thresholds are only at a certain percent, what is the incentive, what is the penalty to ensure that they're you know, getting out of bed, getting in the truck, and coming out of the golden horseshoe? It just isn't there, and I know we argued, and now I'm speaking as a producer, we argued for just that in in the early twos, to avoid really having, you could do Durham, you can do Toronto, uh the golden horseshoe, throw in Ottawa, and you've got six, you're, you've got your sixty percent of the province, and you can pull. But what I'm concerned with, and I really don't see in what we're seeing so far, any kind of um mitigation with respect to what we're going to face here. Because if the incentive is not in the producer's court, uh or the penalty is not in the producer's court, I I just don't see how these low percentages are gonna serve us at all. I'm sorry, Peter, it's it no disrespect to A M O and you, but the reality is I I know too much about it from the front end, and I'm really really um disappointed to see that the producers did win on this threshold business, because it's much too low to really have any positive effect on the environment, let alone our capacity to collect this stuff. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from council? Go ahead, councillor Calvin.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. Um another concern that I have is I don't think currently at our, in this municipality, at our landfill sites, that we differentiate between what they're calling eligible and non-eligible sources, as as I understand it, like a business can go and buy dump tags the same as a resident and take recyclables to the dump, so again, I think that would be difficult, and even the information that producers are asking us to provide, so much of it is related to curbside collection and differentiating between the eligible and non-eligible sources. So it would be, I don't know if we get a a wave if we don't do curbside collection, but yeah, it just feels like a lot of it's not applicable to municipalities like ours.
I'm sure that uh uh Director Holiday will be addressing options such as collection and what that looks like, I know that that is something that's been discussed at a number of times over the years, and the costs associated with that, and what that would look like. Um but uh this is just to turn our minds eye to um what is coming down the pipe and what we will be faced with. And then councillor Jameson can tear it all apart when it comes forward. Um are there any questions? Uh councillor Gurrell, do you have? Oh, sorry, I have councillor Lackey, uh councillor Gurrell, do you have any questions? Nope, okay, go ahead, councillor Lackey.
Thank you, worship through you to the director. Um I realizing that this is information only, uh when the report does does come back eventually, uh can we break it down in how this will um affect the ratepayer? And how it affects us separately, so that people understand, moving forward, what what the expectation is of them as well as us?
I will, for sure.
Okay, are there any questions, anybody online that's watching? Or anybody in the gallery that has any questions? I see no hands up, so we will thank Mr. Hargreaves for uh coming, and thank you on behalf of the Township of Leeds and the Thousand Islands. And thanks to A M O for quarterbacking this and doing some of the heavy lifting uh to become experts in this, so thank you again. So we will move forward with five point two, Lorne Franklin from Robinson Consultants in regards to the municipal drain project status update. So I believe Lorne is online. Just waiting for a camera to turn on, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Flank- Franklin, for joining us virtually. Um and the floor is yours.
Thank you, I'll just share my screen.
Perfect, we see your Yep, we see your screen and we see you.
Okay, thank you. Uh so this is a update on municipal drain projects for Leeds and the Thousand Islands. Uh Robbins Consultants is currently appointed on four municipal drains within the township, those being Smith-Bolger, Creek Road, Polder Bart Webster, and the Jones Creek Municipal Drain. So the drainage areas are, as shown here, the largest one is the Jones Creek Municipal Drain, and we will get to that um. The second one, and all encompassing, is the uh Smith-Bolgers Municipal Drain, which includes the watersheds for both the Polder Bart Webster and the Creek Road Municipal Drain. The Smith-Bolgers Municipal Drain has a main drain and seven branches totaling seventeen point three kilometers worth of open drain. The Creek Road has six branches and five point two four kilometers. The Creek Road has six branches and five point two four kilometers of municipal drain. The Puldevert-Webster Municipal Drain has only the main drain and is four point two five kilometers. And the Jones Creek Municipal Drain is twenty three point seven two kilometers on its own. So the typical process for municipal drain is the township appointment, followed by a draft report, which is provided for the township review and eventually circulated to environmental agencies for review and approval. And after that comes a final report submission. Those reports are then distributed to the affected members of the within the drainage areas, affected landowners. And then the report goes to what's called a meeting to consider under the municipal drain. At that point, council decides whether to give that report first and second reading and move on through the next step of the process or to potentially to send the report back to the engineer for further consideration based on specific concerns. After that part of the process, there's what's called a quarter revision. It is typically three members appointed by council. It can be council members themselves or anybody eligible for council. It can't be people that are not eligible for council, which are primarily staff of the township, can't sit on the quarter revision. After the quarter revision, there is a further appeal to the tribunal for technical considerations. At the quarter revision, the considerations that are mostly based on assessment, the technical considerations come after that at the tribunal. Typically, there are no appeals here, but and assuming that there's none, then the council gives the third reading to the bylaw and the report is finalized. And it can move on to tender and construction. So I'll go through each of the four drains in order. The first one I'm going to go through is the Smith-Bolgers Municipal Drain. The red signifies the drainage area and the blue signifies the drains within there. There's also the Creek Road and the Puldevert-Webster Municipal Drain, as I said earlier, that are both within the watershed of the Smith-Bolger itself and use Smith-Bolgers for an outlet. Robbins Consultants was appointed by the Township of Leeds and the Thousand Islands on March twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, to complete an engineer's report for the Smith-Bolgers Municipal Drain for improvements, maintenance and maintenance of the existing drain under section seventy of the Ontario Drainage Act. The Smith-Bolger Municipal Drain was originally constructed in nineteen seventy three under the provision of a report by J. Graham Engineering Consultants. The onsite meeting as required by the act was held on May tenth, two thousand and eighteen to discuss the project, the process, and to obtain public concerns and comments. The purpose of the drain is to provide adequate drainage and adequate outlet for surface drainage to the lands and roads within the drainage area through modification and improvement, as well as update the existing reports and develop a fair and equitable distribution of costs. The draft engineer's report for the Smith-Bolgers Municipal Drain was submitted to the Department of Fisheries Ocean and Oceans, the Ministry of Environment Conservation for species at risk, the Cataract Way Region Conservation Authority, and the Township of Leeds and Islands for preliminary review and events of the final engineer's report on June twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. Significant delays have been incurred through the environmental agency and review authorization and permit process. They are ongoing. Today, there are concerns that have been expressed by the DFO particularly for the bottom half. They believe that that would have to go to a full Fisheries Act authorization and we are currently consulting with them to see what processes could be put in place to eliminate some of that work and to get this back under what would be called a letter of advice, which is a much easier process to follow and doesn't involve compensation measures or lands otherwise in the township that would have to be involved to compensate for a loss of fisheries within the drain. The DFO confirmed they received the draft engineer's report in March twenty two and her request for review form was to be filled out to begin the review process. Following the submission of the request for review form, meetings have occurred between Robinson Consultants and the DFO in June of twenty twenty two, November of twenty two, March of twenty twenty three. And we have been informed that the project will likely require offsetting measures and to follow the authorization process. As I said, we're trying to negotiate our way out of that currently. RCI is currently preparing an additional information package as a request by the DFO and is assumed that this package may limit authorization and include offsetting requirements. The timeline for DFO authorization and approval remains uncertain at this time. The Cataract Way Region Conservation Authority confirmed they received the draft engineer's report in July of twenty one and provide a list of comments. Further correspondence resulted in a resubmission of based on CRCA's comments, which have been incorporated into the engineer's report. DFO correspondence to RCI with a copy circulated to the CRCA initiated DFO authorization requirements would likely affect the design and ultimately the CRCA permit application. On the basis, it is assumed that the, on that basis, it is assumed that the CRCA permit may not be finalized and issued until the DFO requirements are confirmed. Cost estimates and assessment schedules for the construction and distribution of costs of the proposed works have been drafted. However, the cost estimates and assessment schedules cannot be completed until the full extent of the environmental agency requirements are known since it is likely that approvals will impact the cost estimate. Once the draft engineer's report has received permits and authorizations from the environmental agencies, the engineer's report may be finalized and provided to the township for review. Once the township's review is complete and any subsequent updates are made, the engineer's report will provide for will be provided for distribution. Due to the ongoing consultation with the DFO to obtain authorization or approval, the engineer's report anticipated completion date is unknown at this time. And again, for the Smith-Bolgers, this is the outlet of the Smith-Bolgers. This top piece is their area of concern. The township has also expressed other concern with regard to Wilt's Creek. And ultimately, there have been concerns expressed as far as like Genoan Aquway where sediment from this area is coming. So we believe the measures that we've put in place are important and protect those. However, the DFO primarily sees that as an intrusion into significant, what they consider to be significant fish habitat. Again, this is looking downstream from Russell Road towards the outlet into Wilt's Creek. Other concerns are rock, which was left in place. And if you can see this little arrow off to the side, that is the controlled water level of Lake Genoan Aquway controlled by the Rideau Lakes lock system. So up until this point through the downstream end, so the first two point one kilometers of the drain are impacted by backwater from the lake. Upstream of that point, the drain becomes significantly less and you can see that it is quite overgrown in various places or ponded in other places. The next drain on the list is the Creek Road Municipal Drain. This one is quite a bit simpler and the process to date has been quite a bit smoother. The red is the drainage area. This is Deuce Le Man Road that runs through the center there and Sand Bay Road that runs across the top. This one is primarily constructed of several small branches which run from the outlet at the Smith-Bolgers Drain directly through farm fields carrying flow from Deuce Le Man Road, basically only single lots in here that the drain extends along the length of a phase flow from the upper watershed area. On this one, Robinson Consultants was appointed in two thousand and eighteen to complete the engineer's report for improvements and maintenance under section seventy eight of the Ontario Drainage Act. The Creek Road Municipal Drain was originally constructed in nineteen eighty two under provision of a report by J. Graham Engineering Consultants. The onsite meeting was held May fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. The purpose of the proposed drain is to provide adequate drainage and outlet for the surface and subsurface tile drainage for the lands and roads within the drainage area. The draft engineer's report for Creek Road Drain was submitted to the DFO, MECP, CRCA, and Leeds and Thousand Island for preliminary review on June twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. The DFO approval was provided on October twelfth of twenty twenty two. CRCA approval is anticipated to be obtained by the end of October, early November. It has not yet been received, but we are anticipating it. The cost estimates for the construction and distribution of the cost of the proposed works have been prepared and are set to be finalized upon receipt and confirmation of the CRCA permit conditions. Once the draft engineer's report has been received permits, once it has received the permits and authorizations, the engineer's report may be completed for the township's final review. And once that final review is completed and a subsequent updates are made, the engineer's will be final, engineer's report will be finalized and published. The engineer's report is anticipated to be completed by November to December of twenty twenty three. The meeting to be considered is to be scheduled and it is anticipated to occur on or before February of twenty twenty four. The quarter vision may then be rescheduled after the meeting to consider approximately thirty days. Assuming no significant appeals to the quarter vision or the tribunal, third reading of the bylaw is anticipated for spring of twenty twenty four and it may be possible for tendering and construction to occur in the summer of twenty twenty four. The so a few pictures, these are the branches of the Creek Road Municipal Drain, so they have not received maintenance in quite a while and are quite overgrown. How did we get to the end? I apologize. So this is the Puldevert-Webster Municipal Drain. This is the next one, a shorter singular main branch. The red is the drainage area. The blue signifies the drain. We were also appointed in two thousand and eighteen for that one. The Puldevert-Webster Municipal Drain was originally constructed in nineteen seventy four by A.J. Graham Engineering Consultants. The onsite meeting was also May of two thousand and eighteen. The purpose of the drain very similar to all the other ones. The draft engineer's report was submitted to the DFO and all the other agencies in February of twenty twenty one. DFO approval was provided June fifteenth of twenty twenty one. The CRCA approval is anticipated to be obtained by early November. Again, not yet received, but anticipated to arrive shortly. All conditions have been met and it's only the final publication of the permit that is required at this point. The cost estimates and assessment schedules for the construction have been drafted. And once the permit conditions are in place, can be sent to the township for review. The last and final one for Robbins Consultants is the Jones Creek Municipal Drain. As I said, this one is a twenty three kilometer long drain. It is by far the largest area, extends into the adjacent township from from Leeds and the Thousand Islands. It was originally constructed in the late eighteen hundreds to serve the Avery Mills, which is at the top of this one and convey through flow through to the Young Mills. Both of those mills are no longer there and it's challenging to figure out exactly what the purpose of this drain would be in this current time period. Robbins Consultants was appointed on this one in two thousand and eighteen, similar to the other ones. The original drain report, as I said, was completed in eighteen ninety four and served in some manner the Jones and Avery Mill at the upstream end and the Young Mill at the downstream end and conveyed water between the two. The original requirement for the drain no longer appears to exist. The purpose of the current improvements to the drain would be to provide adequate drainage and adequate outlet for surface and subsurface tile drainage for the lands and roads within the drainage area through modifications and improvements, as well as to update the existing reports and provide a fair and equitable distribution of costs. In addition to this intended purpose, it was noted on the that the file on this drain was incomplete and subsequently insufficient for the township to be able to lawfully maintain the drain. However, as I said, it's noted that the original purpose of the drain no longer exists and the needs for improvements are questionable. Review was completed and noted that the drain now appeared to be substantially a naturalized system. It was clear from onsite review that maintenance had not been completed in many years. Significant costs would be incurred to complete, even to complete the survey and to maintain the drain. Only a portion of the survey was actually able to be completed at this time due to the constraints within the system. Improvements may not be of a net benefit. Most uses are currently accommodated by the drain as it exists without maintenance through the naturalized system. Robbins Consultants believes that consideration of abandonment abandonment may be applicable here. It is recommended that a preliminary information meeting be completed with any affected residents to consider abandonment and address any of the concerns with this approach. Should the outcome of the preliminary information meeting be favorable for abandonment, Robbins Consultants would then proceed to complete a brief abandonment report, which would then be distributed for an official meeting to consider as per the requirements of the Drainage Act. If abandoned, the status of the water course would return to a natural system, natural slash natural water course. The township and respective owners would be absolved of further responsibilities under the Drainage Act. And the drain itself would revert to standard common law and other environmental regulations would continue to apply to the drain. This is a picture of generally what the Jones Creek Municipal Drain looks like. As you can see, it's there's quite a bit of protected wetland that it serves a very naturalized system, difficult due to the width and other restrictions in the drain to even be able to survey that drain. In summary, the Smith-Bolgers Municipal Drain, Robbins Consultants is currently coordinating with environmental agencies, the DFO and the CRCA to obtain approvals. The Creek Road is virtually complete and approvals are anticipated and can proceed to a meeting to consider very shortly, as well as similar for the Puldevert-Webster Municipal Drain and the Jones Creek. We are recommending for abandonment and would like to hold a preliminary information meeting, which would need to be scheduled, but should likely be scheduled in conjunction with meetings to consider for the Creek Road and the Puldevert-Webster Municipal Drain. That's the end of the presentation that I have for tonight. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. So I'll turn to the council for discussion and questions. Go ahead, Counselor Lackey.
Thank you, worship and through you. With regards to the Smith-Bolger Drain, did we not do work on that in the last six years or so?
Would have been six years ago, exactly. So the question is, why are we doing more work on it now? Is that the question?
Yes, specifically where and are we redoing or is it do again? Or is this new?
Okay, I guess I'll turn to Mr. Franklin if you can answer that question. If not, we'll go to the director.
Through the chair, it's my understanding. Um through the chair, it's my understanding that the um report was uh quite a bit older and required some updating to bring it to current standards. It's not necessary that um although there is some work to bring the drain to current standards, it's not repeating the same work that was uh completed before. Uh much of the drain to the profile is uh completed to the extent that it needs to be, although there is uh the system is very sedimenty, so there is a lot of uh sediment that is again collected in the drains, uh specifically at uh sediment traps. Um but there are additional needs that couldn't be accomplished um by returning it to the uh original report for this, so that would be uh further sediment and erosion control and uh widening of the banks and slope flattening uh that do protect for the erosion and protect the limit the maintenance for the future as well as updating it to the current standards. But if um Director uh Halliday has any uh additional items to add there, I'd be happy to let him add them.
Director, do you have anything to add to that?
Uh thank you through your worship. Um so thi- this predated my my coming to the township, but it is my understanding that uh that it was the will of council to to under undertake a review of all of the municipal drains. So uh Robinson Consultants has been engaged to to review the creek, uh Smith Bolger, Pulverberg Webster and Jones, and then McIntosh Perry has been engaged as well for the Pierce Blasco and the Beerman and Allen Drains. So that that's every drain that we have in the in the municipality is being investigated at this point.
But I think that the com- the question that councillor Lackey has is a bit more specific. Go ahead.
Yes, uh just to follow up, um I think um you know, a- as far as the the people on the drain who are responsible for uh for paying for the drain, um this seems a bit excessive since the last go around uh was quite extensive and it was quite a lot of money um put forward. So I would hope there's not too much wrong with the Smith Boulder Drain. Um I'm sure these people, um maybe some of them are here, I haven't noticed yet, but um I'm sure you'll be hearing from them. So I hope there's an opportunity that um that these people who are affected uh will have uh will have a say about this as well.
Okay, um I have deputy mayor Foti and that's it for now.
Thank you worship through you to Mr. Franklin. I have a few questions. I'm gonna start in reverse with the Jones Creek. How could it be that this is considered one of our municipal drains and yet through your wording, the records and maintenance and such has been left to stagnate for years? How how was that possible?
Through the chair, the uh municipal drain um and the Drainage Act is a very old legislation. It actually stems from what was originally called the um Act to Regulate Line Fences and Watercourses, which was the basically legislation number two for all of Upper Canada. They have existed in place since the uh eighteen fifties. Uh basically, people said, uh, okay, we're Canada now. What do we do about this water that the other guy is dumping on me? It's important legislation that allows for uh rural residents to uh convey flow. Uh once a drain is in place, it's always in place. So we have many drains that are in place that have been there since uh well, this one eighteen seventy-nine, I believe I said. Uh but there are other ones um. Once they are there, they are protected in perpetuity and um the Drainage Act has eventually evolved to include municipalities such as yourself, which were forced to take on these responsibilities under the Drainage Act. So just because uh there's not everything there, as long as there's some belief or understanding that the um there was originally a report and there was originally a bylaw, which uh we do have a copy of the report. Uh we don't have the original bylaw. We don't have the original plans for that drain. Um but as far as we can tell from the report, that it does exist, that it originally had a bylaw and that the municipality retains um a uh responsibility to that drain. And therefore it either needs to be abandoned so that you no longer have the responsibility or you have to undertake a new report to be able to update it that and to properly maintain it. Um and as we've gone through the process, we've found that uh the cost to update and maintain that one or to upgrade it to the point where uh it could again be uh considered a fully functional municipal drain uh would be significant and the improvements that residents would get from that um not much different than they get from the system today. And um there's no known complaints that I'm aware of on that municipal drain uh for maintenance or concerns with the way that it works right now. Uh so that is why we're recommending abandonment.
Okay, second question. The word abandonment, this is the first report I've ever seen regarding our municipal drains where that word has been interjected into a report. Did that word abandonment come from Robinson Consulting Incorporated? Were they the people that that come up with this term? Or suggestion that it be abandoned?
Abandonment is an official process that is included under the Drainage Act and it has a uh definition and a statement um definition, at least under the act. It's it's a specific section of the act that allows people, once the drain no longer serves its purpose, to get out of that uh responsibility under the Drainage Act. So no, we did not come up with it. It is a uh it is a section of the act. Um it's generally not recommended. Uh this is the first one where I would have the specifically recommended it um. It does come into play specifically where um you're typically only abandoning a portion of a municipal drain at the uh very upstream end. Let's say it becomes a subdivision and the drain's been incorporated by storm sewers, so you're abandoning it because the drainage in the in that area is going to be serviced by that storm sewer and the open drain is no longer required. You may still keep a portion of it for the outlet. In this case, what it refers to is uh simply an abandonment of the responsibilities. It's not a filling in of the drain. It's not a cancellation of the drain. The uh water course will still continue to exist in the way it does. It's just uh no longer the responsibility of the municipality to maintain it.
Okay, thank you. If you'll bear with me, if you will. If you took the scenario you just mentioned, Mr. Franklin, and reversed it and you abandon the downstream end, how would you remove such cases as a beaver dam? For instance, is that considered an environmental area now and it can't be touched? Like, I'm I'm very concerned about the word abandonment here. The reason I bring this all to light is the presentation that you've given us here referred to land being surface and subsurface drain in the three drains you mentioned earlier. But it alludes to cropland, which for the most part, a lot of it uh that was the purpose of the drain in the first place, the municipal drain, and to be maintained. But there seems to be I'll use the word abandonment of the very cropland that encompasses the Jones Creek. There's a lot of cropland on the upper portion of the Jones Creek. If this is gonna be abandoned, and I know from some of the faces that are showing up here in the gallery here tonight, their landowners on that upper portion of the Jones Creek. And they they can speak for themselves, but when I got this report last week and read it, I was a little aghast, I must admit, when I saw the word abandonment. It really did catch my eye. I'll leave with one more question. The red line that determines the drainage area, how is that ascertained?
Uh the red line is typically ascertained through uh LIDAR and um elevations, contours. Uh it's basically the uh drainage area so that um you know, if water falls on one side of that line, it's anticipated that it goes somewhere else. If it uh falls inside that line, it's anticipated that through grades or swales or uh other water courses or roadside ditches or by whatever means that water eventually makes it to the uh to the drain to use that as an outlet. Um and with regard to your question of abandoning the downstream end of the drain, uh that is typically why it's not recommended in other cases, uh but we are recommending it here uh for the whole portion of the drain. If you were to abandon the downstream portion of the drain, uh especially in an area where it's uh where the drain might not otherwise be considered a natural water course, which I believe this one is. Um if it were simply a private ditch, then it reverts to common law, not repairian rights and um and natural water course rights. Um if it reverts to common law, then people don't have to accept uh the flow from their upstream neighbors, so they could choose to block it, which is why we would never recommend the abandonment of the downstream portion of a drain while keeping the upstream. Um in any case, uh under any scenario where we would recommend an abandonment, it starts at the upstream end and it works its way down until perhaps in the end, the whole drain is abandoned. Uh if necessary, in this case, we believe that um by abandonment, it uh reverts to a natural water course. Um while there is a lot of cropland in this watershed, we believe that uh that cropland is currently served by the drain as it exists now and the natural water course as it exists now. Um a lot of the cropland is quite I can't say that all the cropland is quite elevated, but most of the cropland is quite elevated above the water course itself. Um and that allows them to outlet to the water course uh without the impact of beaver dams, which there are beaver dams. There are blockages on that drain now, but they don't appear to be impacting anybody. I no concerns have been expressed at any of the public meetings we've had that say that people are concerned about um the current state of maintenance on the drain, which um we're unaware of when the last time it was maintained. Um that the water course in the way that it is serves to provide the drainage that uh people need. Um so that's why we are comfortable recommending this one for abandonment. Um if it comes up through uh questions or through the uh through the public meeting, which uh we've proposed to hold uh so that people can express their concerns that they want to move forward and they're prepared to pay for municipal drain and the updates that would be necessary to take this water course to as back as a municipal drain. We are um more than happy to do so. Um but it will be challenging and it will be very expensive to return it to a municipal drain.
I have um councillor Gurrell with his hand up. Go ahead, councillor Gurrell.
Thank you uh through your worship. Uh uh interesting uh comments, I must say, uh from the engineering department. When I look at the drain on my map, was the twenty-three kilometers, the entire drainage through um front of Young and so on to the uh outlet at Jones Creek. And secondly, can we're one township that drainage is going through at least two? So in order for it to be uh considered a uh drain, a municipal drain, does it require that all municipalities are privy or party to it? And therefore all property owners. And lastly, if it was just the minus our municipality, can that be upgraded to our property line, shall I say? Uh it would certainly change the flows into the neighboring township. Is that a legality? Can that be done or does this be, does this require the multiple municipalities to participate? Because it would strike me that would make your engineering report very challenging. And then coming to your engineering report, are you actually going to provide the people upstream any more information than you've already given us? Because at this point, it's pretty clear to me that you're just gonna say, we recommend you abandon this. And at this meeting, what opportunities are those upstream farms and properties going to have to choo- to change that mind? Like, someone's gotta have an idea of some costing here, obviously. Um I've spoken to some of the upstream people and they are not very happy with this report. They're not very happy with the word abandonment and they feel abandoned. And I don't blame them because they're not being presented with one shred of kind of evidence here. It's uh I would hope that a report in a public meeting with a public forum would have a little more meat on it. Thank you very much.
Are there further comments or questions? From, sorry? Rock covered councillor Mabes. Okay. So I will just go to the online attendees, which there are none. So I have a number of people in the gallery. If there's anybody that would like to ask any questions of the consultants or have any comments to make, please uh put your hand up and please approach the uh computer here with the microphone if you're interested in doing so. Please come forward. When you get to the microphone, just state your name and where you live. Oh, it's sorry. Can you put, turn it on? I just need to touch the button. There we go.
Okay, my name is Stuart Blancher. I live on uh Mountain Street. The main drain, that drain goes completely through my property. It is my borderline through my property except for the back end uh which uh crosses my property and the neighbor's property before it goes under the Rockfield Road. That area has been flooded for thirty years. We've asked numerous times to have beaver dams taken out to lower the water. It never happens. They they might get it out and that's right back. They they uh right now, there's a beaver dam that Perry requested someone look at two weeks ago. It's still there. No one's looked at it. I'm sorry, I said no, no one's looked at it. No one's removed it. It's just a little dam, a hole would take it out in ten minutes. I might be able to take it out in an hour by hand because I took out one this spring by hand. Uh they asked, they said that there nobody said that there any concerns. At the meeting, there was that we had, there were several people whose land were flooded. They asked whose hand, who's land were flooded. I put up my hand because my land was flooded. They say that no concerns. No one came and asked me anything. When they went down the, when they went down the creek, they didn't come and knock your door. Have you got any concerns? I've got several concerns. I've got a spot on my property where the that during the rigid construction, which wasn't in the eighteen nineties, it was in the thirties, when they actually dug that ditch. They they had to blast through about a hundred feet. And and right now, the ditch on either side of it is more than two feet lower than the blasted area. So and when the water does go down in the spring, there's two feet of water that stays upstream. That makes it harder for my neighbors up up the way to tile because that water is always in there. But right now, if that two feet was taken out, the water downstream is so high that that the it won't get away. My property is a very odd property. I have, it comes at one point halfway between the roads down to a hundred feet. At that point, I have a cohort so I can cross a ward ditch to get to the back of my my property where I have a field. Uh right now, the the water is three feet deep to the top of my cohort. If it comes up six inches more, I'm driving through water. If it comes up a foot more, I can't go. My property is gonna be lost to me. And you're saying you're going to abandon it? So that I'll have no recourse to ask somebody to take to take out a dam if the neighbor down the way says, oh, I don't want to take out the dam. It's not hurting me. And I get flooded out? Who's gonna compensate me for the loss of the value of my farmland when you abandon that drain? Because now I'll just be able to, if I go to sell my my farm in ten years, I'll have to say it's a recreational property. You're gonna have lots of water because it's gonna flood back. It'll take a lot to flood back because there's a flood plan and he said there's hardly any agriculture land on that. I farm close to a hundred acres of that low land. My low, my land is almost all flat that I farm. I have forty-five acres of soybeans. That's the best in maybe the maybe the community on that low land. If the water comes up two feet, that's all gone. That we know drainage to it. And that's my concerns with abandoning the drain.
Okay. One thing I want to make abundantly clear, this is a delegation and a presentation to council. No decisions are being made to abandon the drain as of this evening. Obviously, there's very, there's a lot of discussion to be had and we appreciate all those who've come out to uh voice their concerns. So thank you for sharing your information with us.
Well, when it says it's on the bottom line, scheduled to abandon, somebody's made the decision it's being abandoned. And that's not right.
If you'd like to come forward, please do so. Please state your name and your address, please. Please state your name and your address, please.
Yeah, my name is uh, Mark Miller. I'm with twice. I just like what Mr. said, I think you did a good job of presenting. I have a few questions for Mr. Franklin. Uh, number one is how did you reach the conclusion? When you mentioned that there is no significant uh, impact being made upstream, how do you reach that conclusion? As far as the Amish community, we moved here in twenty twenty. Uh, looking at that farm then as the eastern farm then, uh, I was totally unaware of anything happening. In the last, uh, actually, probably about two weeks ago, I had no idea there was anything happening. So I would like to ask him that question. How did you reach that conclusion with no input from any of the farmer ground? I, I farm, uh, my farm a hundred twenty-five acres there. There's three drainage pitches that uh, go down from my land through Jones Creek. Uh, the second question I have for him, he never did answer councillor Goldie's question. About what that entails, if it is abandoned, if uh, if what we are, uh, what are we going to be allowed to do? Uh, as far as uh, spreading the door with uh, taking off beaver dams, I think uh, councillor Goldie asked a very valid question and I don't put it answered. Uh, in a, in a, in a real direct way. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Franklin, can you answer those questions?
So if it is abandoned, it reverts to a natural water course status. So anything that you'd be allowed to do adjacent to a natural water course or within a natural water course, including removing beaver dams on your own. Or uh, removing blockages on your own. Um, anything that you'd be allowed to do in a natural water course, you would be allowed to do in an abandoned drain that reverts to a natural water course. If um, that's.
Sorry. Is it fair to ask though that if, if there were further blockages downstream or upstream? Holding water back or holding water? Period. And it's on someone else's property, that would be a civil matter at that point in time because. It's not a municipal drain, which means you would have to pursue a civil course of action?
It would be a civil matter at that time, yes.
Just for clarity. Um, okay.
If I may further answer though, um, to the other questions, um.
Sure.
This was meant to be an update on the status to uh, to council. It was not meant to be a presentation on the individual drains itself. Um, we are recommending, what we're recommending is a public meeting where we would have a proper presentation prepared. Individually for each drain where the uh, affected landowners are invited. Uh, we're happy to continue to receive um, any um. Questions or concerns, we, we've received very limited questions or concerns to date on this. Uh, since our initial public meeting in two thousand and eighteen. Uh, they can be directed through staff or they can come directly to me. And I'm happy to uh, take them under consideration and, and look further at it. The idea of the uh, meeting which we've suggested to be scheduled is to present on that and to allow. The members of the public and. Uh, to comment and for those to be con- considered by council. And then we would be looking for direction of council. It's not up to us whether it's abandoned or not, it's up to council. Uh, whether they want to proceed with a full report and up to the members of the public. Uh, the landowners that are affected on that, whether they're prepared to pay for. The requirements uh, that would be there to make it a municipal drain.
Fair enough. Um, I have another member from the gallery, if you'd like to come forward. Please state your name and your address, please. Is it on? Uh, sorry, can I ask you to just turn on the microphone? There's a button down. It's, it's on, okay. There we go. Thank you. There. But we'll hope. Alright, there you go. It's on now.
We did do a, a drain on that and there was a study done at that time. But my understanding, there don't seem to be any records of it. Where did these records go? There should be records of that being. We had an engineer's report on it, I said at the time, it'll cost more for the engineer's report than it would be to do the drain, but. But near as I can understand, there don't seem to be any records of that. Where did these records go?
So the records from the amalgamation process, um, I, all the records that would have come over from the front of Ascot. Um, would be, would have been received here, how they were handled back then, I certainly can't speak to. Um, but you're saying, uh, Mr. Ferguson, that you were on council nineteen seventy-five to nineteen eighty?
Yes.
Okay, so that actually is helpful for staff to go through records, what they can find. Uh, if any, um, and uh, we might have. An, an old employee we can reach out to that might know where to find, she was very good at that as well, so. Um, that just narrows the scope, so we can look for the most recent thing on file. Um, but to your point with the beaver dams, I, your question, I think the answer was that if it's on your property, you can. You can do with that what you will. But if it's on someone else's property, then you can't touch it and it's up to you to make an agreement with that neighbor. And if the neighbor chooses not to deal with it, then it becomes a civil matter. Then it becomes a, a legal battle between neighbors.
But if it's a municipal drain, why, the township has the right to go in and take it out.
I believe that is the case, Mr. Franklin. Can you confirm that?
That would be correct. If it is a municipal drain, there's a responsibility to maintain it and to remove beaver dams as necessary.
Okay, so that's the clarification you were looking for.
And you said there was a study done. When was this study done? I don't recall if anybody were contacting my neighbors, anybody about this study about abandonment.
The, it's just been done recently, this, but I think the original information or the original. Um, steps were taken in twenty eighteen in regards to the history on this, so. This was pre-Mister Holliday's time, um, that was around the same time that Smith Bulger Drain. Uh, stuff was finished, so I don't know if, we had a different consultant at that time, is that correct, Mr. Holliday?
DK Graham, I think, wasn't it?
Uh, Dennis, Dennis Grant, oh, I forget what his name was, sorry. Sorry, Dennis Shannon.
Okay.
So we had Dennis Shannon, who was previous to Robinson, uh, group, Robinson Consultants. If you would like to address that, Mr. Holliday.
Correct, yes, it was uh, Dennis Shannon that, that represented the municipality at that point.
At that point, so um, we've only switched over to Robinson since when, Mr. Holliday? A general idea.
Lauren, could you provide the details on that? That was before I was.
We were appointed on all reports in May of two thousand and eighteen for the four that we're doing.
So that was previous to this, well, this council's first term. Anyway, um, so. Based on the information that Mr. Franklin has brought to this, this evening, no steps are being taken until any further public consultation is made. In which case, I would assume, Mr. Franklin, that all affected parties on the drain would be contacted and given an opportunity to. Uh, attend a meeting.
Correct.
Correct. So no decisions will be made about abandonment.
Okay.
Long before a public meeting happens at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
If I may, I believe there's one question that I didn't answer yet.
Sure, go ahead.
And that was uh, with regard to um, multiple municipalities.
Yeah.
So in this case, you are the upstream municipality. Um, the Drainage Act doesn't look at municipalities itself, it looks at the drain and a water course. So if appointed by one municipality and you are the upstream municipality, the engineer is required to. Uh, well, we could make improvements to the upstream portion for your portion only. We would ultimately also have to look and make sure those improvements are being taken to a sufficient outlet. So if it's believed that by doing improvements, we don't have sufficient outlet in the downstream and we're required to take it through there. And the downstream municipality is obliged to participate under the Drainage Act.
So that would be front of Young.
Yes. So they'd be required to participate if they needed to and they are. Required to assess their landowners for the costs that come from the upstream landowners and all those sorts of things. There's specific requirements for multiple municipalities under the Drainage Act, but it is addressed in there.
Okay. Councillor Gurrell, do you have another question?
Nope, that just covered it right there. Thank you very much.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, I have one more person from the gallery and then we'll. Because this is a delegation, we wanna make sure that all uh, public members are heard. Go ahead.
My name is Michael Kemp and I live up on Mountain Street. Um, I apologize because I moved to the township, uh. It's in twenty twenty with, uh, just before the Amish folks moved in. My first question would be, in the reports for three of the four drains, there is the onsite meeting is noted. For Jones Creek, there isn't. Was there ever an onsite meeting for Jones Creek, Mr. Franklin?
Um, yes, I apologize if it wasn't mentioned there. Um, I likely wouldn't have the specific date, but it happened around the same time. There were uh, two on the one date and two on the second date, so it would have been uh. May of two thousand and eighteen that the onsite meeting was.
Now, under the Drainage Act, and I, I apologize, you've been referred to as the expert um, by Mr. Holliday. So I'm asking, my understanding is that there's two ways to abandon a drain. One is by petition from landowners, the other is um. By designation from the superintendent of drains for the township, which would be Mr. Tuck here. I guess the question is, is that what's happening? Has Mr. Tuck recommended that the drain be abandoned? Because the landowners haven't.
Go ahead, Mr. Franklin.
Mr. Tuck has not recommended that there would be an abandonment. It's our recommendation after reviewing it, that it would be rec- that it could be considered for abandonment. And, and why we want to consider further consultation and further public meetings on that regard. It can be abandoned either by uh, seventy-five percent of the landowners who receive benefit. From the drain, so that would be seventy-five percent of the people that touched uh, the municipal drain. Um, that rarely ever happens. The other one is uh, by declaration of council. And they can declare it, um, but we anticipate that that would only occur after enough public consultation is uh. Been conducted and they believe that that is the proper course of action and it would um. Then initiate all the other um protections and components that come under the Drainage Act for, for abandonment and for. Uh, further landowner consultation and this would be really. The initial consultation is to see if, if that's actually what the landowners want, which I'm hearing now that there are some landowners that don't want it. It's the first that I've heard of it. Um, but uh, that's the type of information that we'd be looking for and whether they're willing to um. Pay the cost for what would be required on that municipal drain, um. I think if we were to prepare a report that indicated what the cost might be. Um, that could be done through a preliminary report, um, if it's decided that abandonment isn't an option. Uh, the, the one that we would recommend is to go to a preliminary report, which looks at the costs. And the viability of turning that to a municipal drain and gives uh, further options to uh, for. Ca- council and the affected landowners to consider without going to all the expense. Um, when we initially looked at the surveying, we had done approximately the value of the surveying. That was originally estimated, which is around thirty thousand dollars. Uh, it was estimated at the time that it would have cost up to eighty thousand dollars to complete the survey. Because of the nature and extent of the drain. Um, at that time, it was stopped by staff. They said, we don't believe that. It could go forward on that basis, um, based on the expense of even just the survey. Um, so there has been some delay in the process while we did that. Um, but we are recommended that, that we go for further public consultation and provide further public information. So that everybody's aware of exactly what would be required and they can make informed decisions.
In your uh, presentation, you, you say that the, the drain was originally uh, created for the two mills, correct?
That's what the report says, yes.
Okay, now where did you get this information? What report would this have been?
Uh, we've received a copy that was found of uh, at least portions of the, whatever it was, eighteen seventy-four report.
Uh, and I'm sorry, where were they found? Like, the town has them?
And the town has a copy of them too, yes.
Okay. Now, my understanding is that in nineteen twenty-five, a petition uh, to dismantle the dams for the. Um, original mills was brought forward. I don't have any information from nineteen twenty-four on till nineteen seventy-eight. When the drain was again cleared out and the mills were long gone by then. So that may have been originally. Put in place for these two mills. And I guess there were a number of mills in between, um, along Jones Creek. But at some point, it's changed for drainage for agricultural purposes. As a landowner that's not directly on Jones Creek, but adjacent to it, my land does flow into there. And it'll be negatively affected by a decision to abandon the drain. And I noticed that. All the other drains, it's business as usual, let's go forward, let's find out what we're dealing with, but for ours, we're not even given that option. Because somebody's deemed it too expensive. Or for whatever reason, they've decided, and that's just not right. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I just want to reiterate again, there has been no discuss- decision to abandon the drain. The recommendation from the consultant has been brought forward for our consideration or information, but there would be a report coming forward. Um, and as per the consultant, much more consultation would happen before a decision would be made. So I don't want anybody to leave this meeting tonight, thinking there's a decision made. We are far from any decision. Um, and obviously, based on the turnout this evening, there'll be much more public consultation at this point going forward. In regards to the options available to maintain the drain, uh, do clean out or um, any further work. So councillor, maybe you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, part of mine was uh, alludes to probably everybody's topic, uh, councillor Lackey. When you first talked about us doing these drains uh, back when I first sat at the table. And that that costs were transferred back to all the residents of the drain. And in some cases, it was basically debentured through the tax uh. Uh, remittance uh, to pay it off. And in some cases, it was a fairly large bill that I remember. So in the further report coming forward, uh, will there be recommendations or a, a rough costing? Of what it would take to bring all these drains up to uh, the, the proper gr- uh, standards that are required? Including the Jones Creek, uh, and how that would be affected uh, with front of Young. Yeah, because I know that we had some conversation about that one in a previous uh, report too, of how, of how that would work. Um, thank you.
I'll go to the director on this one.
Thank you, through your worship. Um, I, I think what, what Lauren was trying to get across here is that to turn this into a, like, bring it back to a. A municipal drain, there's, there's a significant amount of expense required to do so. Um, so the last comment that Lauren had made was to sort of take a step back and. And provide a high level cost estimate that we can share with, with the group and give them a sense of, of what the costs are that uh. That we'd be considering as a result of bringing this back to municipal drain, just to give them the, the heads up in advance of, of going down the road of doing the survey. Uh, because it sounds like the, the cost of surveying our portion of this will be significant as well and that, that is shared. For everybody that is on the municipal drain, so it's important for everybody to, to understand what the costs are before we take those, those first few steps. It's a, yes, that's uh, I believe that is our first step, that's, that's what we will commit to do for everybody's to, to provide a, a cost estimate of. Of what we're looking at and, and what the cost would be shared for all of the property owners on the, on the municipal drain.
And just to further those points, uh, with the former um, work that was done on Smith Bulger Drain. Um, the, the amounts were levied after the survey based on how many feet of. Um the the amounts were levied after the survey based on how many feet of the drain. Um and then levied on the tax bill, there was an agreement with council. To carry that debt for a certain period of time on behalf of the uh people on the municipal drain. Um it was quite a contentious issue, mainly because it wasn't, I don't believe, done correctly upfront. I think they were holding, looking to hold it at zero percent interest, which we're not eligible to do. Uh as a municipality, I just wanna make that clear that it's one thing to make a decision to allow a certain period of time for payment. But that as a municipality, we're not able to do it for free, um that the municipal act requires us to. I've I don't know the correct verbiage, but I just wanted to get that out there so that we don't go down the same path that we went previously. Um and then I've got Mr. Franklin with his hand up. Go ahead.
So through the chair, um Mr. Holiday's answer was for Jones Creek only, the question was on all four of the drains. And uh so for the two that we anticipate will be available shortly in uh November. And we'll go to a meeting to consider, those reports will come forward and they will have uh full and detailed costing in them as well as assessment schedules. Where the estimated assessment to each property on the other three drains, uh well, the two drains that are coming forward. Uh will be there um when we ultimately complete uh Smith-Bolgers to uh whatever extent is possible. That cost estimate will be there as well. Uh what we haven't done on this one because we could not. For Jones Creek, because we could not complete the uh survey is uh we have no real idea of uh what would be required to maintain that. However, if it's clear from our further public consultation that um. That abandonment is not an option that uh people wish to consider, then we would, as we said, recommend going to a preliminary report. That has to be directed by council and the preliminary report does not give, it does give a uh. An option for a cost estimate to the extent that we're capable of doing so without completing uh significant additional expenses like the survey. Um but it doesn't give individual cost estimates, but that would be there as an option going forward as well. So all four of them would uh ultimately have a cost estimate associated with them.
So we will also be working hard to track down any documentation from front of Ascot. Um as per Mr. Ferguson's point, um because if there was work done there, um between seventy-five and eighty. There would have been some documentation on who owned what, I I would think. So go ahead, Mr. Holiday.
Actually, we're lucky enough to have Pierre Mercier sitting in the audience and he has provided me with a link to the the archives that does have some information on Jones Drain.
Ask and thou shalt receive. Thank you very much, Mr. Mercier. So um so obviously, based on the conversation here this evening, there's much more work to be done. Um and uh our commitment to the community and those affected by all the drains, not just Jones Creek. That um we will make sure that we communicate with the members on the drain um going forward as best we can. Um and make sure that uh you're notified of any potential decisions that would be made. Um so that you can participate in that discussion at that time. Okay, so councillor Fody or deputy mayor Fody?
Thank you, worship to you. Just a comment, I had two or three people that are not in attendance here tonight. Express a lot of dissatisfaction that there was a public meeting such as this tonight on municipal drains. And yet the municipal drain payees were not notified. I don't know if that's legislation that they should be, but maybe as a a polite gesture of uh. Of uh. Consideration that they should be from here going forward. Um I I heard that from a few residents who couldn't be here for various reasons tonight and they were. And uh ironically enough, they were not members of the Jones Creek, uh they were on other the municipal drains. And they were disappointed that there was this presentation tonight and yet as paying landowners into these drains, they were not notified of this meeting. So I think we should maybe correct that going forward, thank you.
So that is being noted by staff. Any further comments or questions? I have one last question from the gallery before we break.
Jim Ken, uh Landstone, Porbiton Road. Uh question for you, Mr. Franklin. Just for clarity's sake, I believe I heard you earlier say. That we could bring our concerns directly to you if we had them? Is that correct?
Mr. Franklin?
Uh yes, I'd be happy to receive them. Uh I would definitely be uh. Copying in staff on it, so uh whether they come to staff or to myself, they will be shared uh directly between myself and staff as well, so.
It, yeah, I appreciate that. It's a tricky situation because we don't often think of drains. They just exist, so typically. They don't receive the forefront of our attention and I can appreciate the contention here tonight because. They're only a problem when they're really a problem. How do you, uh with specific regard to the creek drain? What metrics do you use to determine when a drain needs to be serviced?
Um typically, those are done by the drainage superintendent, so we are not involved at any point in the process. Uh the drainage superintendent is responsible for maintenance. Typically, they consider whether there's a. Request from landowners, whether there's concern, um there can be a uh. There's different styles of maintenance, which can be like a proactive approach, so uh the municipality decides to do a drain every ten years. Whether it needs to or not, um and that can be beneficial from uh the point of uh. DFO approvals, quite often they consider water courses after ten years to. Or even municipal drains after ten years to uh somewhat naturalize and they have additional requirements if you wanna clean them out. Uh so the proactive. Approach has been found to be beneficial to some municipalities, other ones just maintain them when they get the concerns of the landowners. Uh quite often, they will go for thirty or forty years before they are need to be maintained. Or before people are looking for maintenance um. That part isn't really up to us, it's when uh a municipality decides that uh the report is outdated enough. That it needs to be updated and brought to modern standards or that there's additional requirements for outlet or for whatever reason. That we get appointed as engineers and we are there to uh look at that on behalf of all landowners and decide um. Make it engineering determination as to um. What additional measures need to be taken on that drain, whether it's taking a drain to a sufficient outlet, whether it's widening, deepening or improving it. For tile outlet, uh whether it's simply only a clean out and providing a new schedule of assessment that. Accounts for uh the severances and subdivisions and uh. Uh land use changes and all those things that happen over thirty or forty years, um it can be as simple as just doing a new. You know, assessment schedule without doing any work on the drain, but um those determinations are made after we're appointed.
Okay, thank you. And last question, uh again with specific regard to the creek drain. There's a very small amount of footage for a large area of land. And I understand that there's a. There's a difference between direct and indirect benefit. Is that correct? Am I am I perceiving that correctly?
Uh there are two types of assessment under the uh Drainage Act or two primary types of assessment. There are other ones uh that don't. Impact most people most of the time. The two are uh benefit, which are those properties which are uh. Directly improved by having the drain on them. Uh they're typically the ones that touch the drain itself. So a a landowner can uh bring tiles directly to those drains or swales or whatever and get uh drainage directly for their lands. The other one is outlet, it is for everybody. Within the drainage area that contributes flow to the municipal drain to um. Um participate in the outlet. Basically, you're taking a right that you. Buying a right that you wouldn't necessarily otherwise have under common law for your water to move through somebody else's property. Uh so the people who originally petitioned for the drains, they wanted that right to move that property, move that water from. In the case of Creek Road, from the area north of Deuce-Lemain Road. Uh through the property south of down uh Deuce-Lemain Road to get to uh the Smith-Bolgers drain. So they were looking to buy that right, they did so and they're responsible then and uh now to. Um pay their share of the cost for the maintenance of that drain and the upkeep of that drain and in that case uh. Uh to pay their costs for the uh new report that was decided. Uh by the previous council as being required.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So it is now eight ten PM and we've been at this since six thirty, so. Um I'm going to call the discussion at this point in time, we have no hands up online. So we thank Mr. Franklin for the presentation and obviously there's much more work to be done. Uh I know our director has taken copious amounts of notes. Any of the members of the public who have uh participated here this evening. We will provide an email address to uh email any concerns directly to Mr. Franklin. That's probably the best way to have it documented uh and form part of the consultation process. Um and then uh I think we have a bit of a road ahead before any decisions are made at this point. So I will call a recess for ten minutes, so I apologize to our lovely uh library people. Who've been so patient through the two delegations, but we need a a bathroom break. Uh and a little bit of a stretch, so ten minutes, thank you.